Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The June 6, 2022 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Mr. Pruski this evening.
Thank you. If everyone could please stand. If you would just join me in whatever faith or whatever belief you have in your own order, I'm going to say reflection this evening. As we gather here tonight as members of the Anarundel County Council, we have to be mindful of the opportunities to render service to all citizens in our community. Please keep in mind the enduring values of public service. That's why we're here. Exerting our efforts in all those areas and all things upon our future generations to build confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world for all of us and continue to work for the community. We ask this in your name. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to welcome Andrea Mansfield, Chair of the Charter Review Commission. Her commission has been working hard for months and months at this time. I'll let you tell more detail. But the charter report was completed last week, and we look forward to hearing your summary of your work.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. There we go. Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's nice to be here with all of you this evening. And you're right, yes, we've actually, it's eight months now we've been meeting. You know, and it was really hard in the beginning. It was, well, also the timing of things with the census data, and it seemed like a very daunting task. And now that we are through it, I think all of us felt last week, we were like, wow, all right, we made it. And it really, it went by really quickly. We feel we accomplished a lot. And really, it was a great group. I think we all, I mean, it was hard. We were virtual for a lot of the meetings, but I think we really did a good job hashing out the issues in a very professional manner and so forth. I think we really did some good work. So, thank you. I'm really happy to be here with you this evening. Actually, I really do want to thank the staff. As you know, you have great council staff, but we could not have done this without Ms. Corby, Ms. McCauley taking our minutes. Ms. Schultz also helped at different points in times. They were really great and also really, really awesome to work with. The county staff, all the department heads, Mr. Barron, they got to spend a lot of the time with us, too. Mr. Barron was there for every meeting. And so, we really appreciate all of their time that came really to help us understand the issues. As you know, we already did the redistricting report. That was back in January. But for the charter review, we had a total of eight meetings, two of which we had public hearings to hear from the public, one early on, one on the draft report, which was early in May. We discussed the 16 items from the resolution that you passed and presented to us, Resolution Number 5421, as well as we worked through all the articles of the charter itself. So, our reports, I know you have copies of it. I'm just going to summarize some of the highlights. I'm not going to go into each individual thing, but I'll just talk briefly about those recommendations that we did make. And the report also includes language for charter changes should you want to move forth any of these items and adopt them as a council. So, we had several items. One item that we did take up and recommend is dealing with the three full consecutive terms. When we had that discussion, we looked at the other charter counties in the state, and we saw that a number of them do not have term limits. A couple had three. I think Prince George's County was a two-year limit. So, we did go ahead and recommend that we thought that would be consistent with the majority of other charter jurisdictions. However, we did note that by doing that, there may be retirement benefits as well as retiree health benefits that you may want to consider if that's something that you would like to take up. With regard to salaries and retirement benefits and so forth, we did not make a recommendation specific to any of those, but what we did do is recommend that the very outdated language dealing with the salary of $2,100 be struck. It just didn't really seem relevant anymore. Was in there from 19, probably 1963. But we also recommended that the salary or the compensation should be consistent with the recommendations from the Salary Standard Commission. That was an appropriate way to deal with that issue. There was, we talked a lot, and we heard a lot about the language in the charter that was very confusing, that distinguished between the two different types of emergency ordinances when they take effect. So, we did propose some language to clarify that, one being the acute emergencies, I guess, that require five votes from the council versus other emergency type of legislation that you may be dealing with as the fiscal year is wrapping up and things like that. So, we provide some clarification there. We recommended to make the language more gender neutral in the charter. So, those were being done. One thing we recommended, that there should be an outdated reference removed about posting bills on the bulletin board, because we don't really do things that way anymore. We get them through websites and online. We have a recommendation to clarify the scope of the auditor's additional duties. We felt that they should be related to the finances and financial affairs of the county. And I will, I think all of us felt the most important recommendation we made was the timing of when the Charter Revision Commission should be appointed. Because as you know, this year with the data, census data coming out so late, we were not able to begin our work until October. So, we did provide some clarifying language that would have the Charter Revision Commission be appointed at your, beginning of your annual cycle, which I believe is May. So, that with the charter commission could begin their work much earlier and do that. I guess the data would have still come out at the same time, but we could have dealt with some of these other issues and had more thorough discussion on some things. I did want to mention two items that I think probably, well, definitely generated the most discussion for the commission. One was placing the limit on the local income tax rate in the county. We did discuss that for, well, really, two different meetings. It was probably the lengthiest discussion we had. We did recommend against including a cap. I think we felt that a number of jurisdictions, well, one, there are minimum maximums in state law already, and that for Anarundel County, the rate is the third lowest in the state. So, we didn't feel that at this point it was something that we should, we should be recommending as a Charter Revision Commission. And the other issue that did take some time and discussion was the reestablishment of a fire advisory board. There were two items in the resolution dealing with the authority of the fire chief to oversee volunteer fire companies. So, we had the fire chief. We had the volunteer association came. We've received multiple letters. They also testified at a public hearing. But ultimately, there's, currently are reciprocity agreements, as well as the fire advisory board is in statute. And we felt it's probably an issue that should be looked at a little more closely, but the appropriate place to do that would be through working with the fire chief and the volunteers, and whether it's through reciprocity agreements or further legislation to clarify the fire advisory's role. But that, I think that kind of quickly summarizes the recommendations. But really, I want to thank you all. I know Mr. Enright is here this evening, one of the members of the commission. This is his second time serving on a commission, but it was good. It was a great process. Thank you. I was really happy to be a part of it. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for my colleagues? Oh, I see a couple. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. I just want to first, when you talk about folks or citizens having to be unsung heroes and do something that's a volunteer position, I want to thank you, Mr. Enright. While it may seem minor, charter updates are important, not only for, obviously, the citizenry, but to get it right. And I appreciate the recommendations coming forward. I was actually working with Madam Secretary to put some of those recommendations in front of the council as we, you know, worked together. But I just wanted to take you for your time. I know that you were under some deadlines prior for redistricting, but also the discussion, the notes were very appropriate. I appreciate everything that you did. And again, a big thank you. And for those, when I leave the council, you should reappoint her next time, because she does a great job. Just saying. Thank you again.
Actually, I did tell Mr. Enright, maybe he'll be back the next time. I don't know about me. You can do three.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here District 7. I was also just going to say thank you. It's a huge task. I don't know, well, maybe Mr. Enright did, but I don't know if you or others knew quite how huge a task it was when you were originally agreeing to take it on. And I just, I appreciate all your thoroughness and all the hard work that you guys did. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. No, I really didn't, but it was something I hadn't done before. So, I was like, okay, this will be good. Learn experience.
I think my colleagues have already said it, but I'll just repeat it anyway. Thank you very much for your leadership and taking on the task. Again, this is a volunteer position, but it's a very challenging work and requires, you know, a lot of attention and thoughtful deliberation. So, thank you to you. And if there's a way to share it with the entire commission, please, I think this is on behalf of all of us. And thank you for your summary and your report out tonight. It's very appreciated.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, we will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. Nothing was received ahead of time.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have one name on my list, Sally Mitchell. You may come down and have a seat at the table, if you are here. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, if there is anyone else who wishes to speak on a subject not included on the printed agenda, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. This is the last call. All right. Seeing none, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, moving right along. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Lacy.
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of May 16, 18, and June 1, 2022.
May 16, 2022. The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Chair Radveen. The invocation was given by Ms. Lacy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers, Arundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland. May 18, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held at North County High School, Glen Burnie, Maryland.
May I have a motion to?
Sorry, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. June 1, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 9:00 AM. Mr. Volkey gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar.
All right. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 16, 18, and June 1, 2022?
Madam Chair, did Madam Secretary say Glen Burnie High School or North County?
I heard North County.
Okay, good. It's just my ears. Then I'm moved to adopt all these minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Volkey.
And all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of May 16, 18, and June 1, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5822, An Ordinance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundel County Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Bill Number 5922, An Ordinance Concerning Planning and Development, Master Plan for Land Preservation Parks and Recreation. Bill Number 6022, An Ordinance Concerning Branches of Government, Orphans Court Compensation. Bill Number 6122, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Fire Service Retirement Plan. Bill Number 6222, An Ordinance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines, Littering Civil Fines. Bill Number 6322, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Bulk Regulations, Adult Independent Dwelling Units.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1322, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarundel County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Resolution Number 1422, Resolution Approving the Submission of Names for the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. Resolution Number 1522, Resolution Approving Appointments to the Police Accountability Board.
Thank you. And I want to note for the members of the audience and the public listening at home, we will vote on Resolutions Number 13-22 and 14-22 later this evening, once we have gone through all of our bills. And before we move on to our bills, I just thought I would make one little announcement, since it's very unusual that we have fewer than seven members. Ms. Pickard is attending her daughter's high school graduation this evening, so we thought it would be fair if she missed one meeting for that occasion. So, at this time, we will move on to Bill Number 36-22. And the administration has actually requested to withdraw this bill. Is there any objection? I'm seeing none, I'm hearing none from my colleagues either. So, hearing no objections, Madam Secr, excuse me, let's see. Oh, Bill, if there are no objections, we will withdraw this bill. Bill Number 36-22 is withdrawn. All right. So, we will move on to our next bill on the agenda, which is Bill Number 49-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 49-22.
Bill Number 4922, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Special Community Benefit Districts Tax.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, representing the administration, you and your team have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the council. Joining me at the table is Mr. Teroux from the Budget Office and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 4922 codifies existing practices that extend an exemption to the special community benefit tax to properties that are tax exempt under the property tax article of the state code. You may recall, the county executive, with the help of our county delegation, put forward a bill at the state level to do a similar clarifying, codifying of existing practices for the shore erosion control districts and the waterway improvement districts. This was SB 539, HB 635. Those bills passed unanimously and were signed by the governor. This bill, because of the quirks of the way special community benefit districts are treated under state law, requires a local bill, not a state bill, so you have the bill before you. We ask you move this bill tonight to help make sure that folks who are exempt from taxation, such as our fully disabled veterans, are extended that courtesy for their special taxing district fees. So, with that, happy to answer any questions. Please move the bill tonight.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 49-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. And seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 49-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 49-22.
Bill Number 4922, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Special Community Benefit Districts Tax.
Is there any further discussion or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 49-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 4922 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 50-22.
Bill Number 5022, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Revenue Reserve Fund.
Thank you. Once again, this is an admin bill. Mr. Barron, you and your team have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sticking with me is Mr. Teroux from Budget and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. 50-22 increases the allowable balance in the Revenue Reserve Fund from 6% to 7% of the estimated general fund revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. This change would allow the county to accumulate approximately an additional $19 million in our rainy day fund. We, in the budget before you currently, we are taking this to the max and ask that you pass the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Volkey? You may proceed.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Not so much a question, but I just want to applaud the administration for continuing to sort of look at the ceiling and decide where we need to raise it when it's appropriate. Obviously, I put in a bill a few years ago that would have taken this to 10%. We're at 7%. Love to keep seeing in future budgets that we keep growing that number, because I do think that if we see an inevitable downturn in the economy, this is going to be what helps us to ensure that we can protect the services that we're providing to our constituents already. So, with that, look forward to supporting this bill.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 50-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. Having no one signed up to testify here this evening, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, and you did not sign up, you may come down to the table at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Someone hacked into my phone. I have no idea what's going on.
Oh. All right. Well, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 50-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 50-22.
Bill Number 5022, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Revenue Reserve Fund.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 50-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Just as a comment on my vote, I'm supporting this, but I still wouldn't support the 10%. I think at a certain point, what matters more than rating agencies is the spending that we need on the quality of life of all of our county's residents. And this is a lot of money. It's, it could be saved for a very long time, for all we know. And that, you know, in the end, does represent a possible opportunity loss for some people, and we have to always balance that and be mindful. So, but we're only voting at 7% tonight, and I'll vote aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 5022 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 51-22.
Bill Number 5122, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Exempt Service.
Thank you. Once again, this is an admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. Mr. Teroux from Budget, Ms. Bedowski and Ms. Harold from Personnel, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer are joining me at the table. 5122 is the annual pay bill. It adopts new pay schedules, provides for certain pay increases, and reflects negotiated agreements between the county and unions. Our experts at the table can answer any specific questions, but to be clear, the bill does include a COLA and merit increases for county employees. The costs related to the pay bill are accounted for in the FY '23 budget. We do have a technical amendment to bring forward for you at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. At this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 51-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. And once again, no one signed up ahead of time to testify, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. And if you do, these fine folks will give you a seat. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 51-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-22.
Bill Number 5122, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Exempt Service.
Thank you. As Mr. Barron mentioned, there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This technical amendment removes repetitive language and corrects a typographical error in the park ranger employee's R. pay schedule.
Thank you. Once again, this administration's amendment, so if you'd like to make a statement, you are welcome to do so, Mr. Barron.
As is our longstanding policy, we are opposed to typographical errors.
Excellent. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All right. Is there any discussion? I also oppose typographical errors. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
So, because this is a technical amendment, we still can vote on this bill this evening. So, is there any further discussion before we go on? Mr. Volkey.
Just a quick question, Madam Chair. I can't remember, and so that's why I'm asking, because we only do this once a year. Do we normally vote on this before we pass the budget, or do we do it after, or does it matter?
So, I think we've generally done it later in the year. Last year, the budget before, do you recall, Stephen? There was some discussions with the auditor and the Budget Office and Office of Personnel to come up with this new timeframe. If you have anything to add, Stephen, please.
Yeah, Stephen Teroux from Budget Office. The big concern of trying to do it too late in the process is some of these are new classifications and, you know, concurrent with the budget. Well, this is the pay bill. So, we usually do it, try to do it roughly simultaneously with the budget. So, that's kind of the intent there. I think this timeframe, as Mr. Barron had mentioned, is pretty similar to last year as well.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. I guess my only question would be, does it make more sense for us to take this up on the 20th, as opposed to taking it up tonight after we've passed the budget? And would that still allow for enough time to implement this for the July 1 pay period so that no county employee is sort of losing out, but we're passing a budget and then we're passing this, sort of in a procedural process? Does that make more sense?
So, Pete Barron with the administration, first, no county employee would miss out. So, if, if the pay was delayed because, you know, like in previous years, I think one year it passed in September, maybe, everybody got their back pay. So, you, nobody will lose out, but they might not get an increase initially. That's a decision for this council. The personnel or the position control bill is also before you. There is a non-technical amendment, so that one's going to come back on the 21st. If you all feel that it's better to move together, the administration is comfortable with it. I will add one caveat, though. together, the administration is comfortable with it. I will add one caveat, though. There is work that needs to be done by the team at Personnel to implement, and the team from Personnel can definitely speak more to that than I can. And I think they will move heaven and earth to make sure that, I think it's July 7th is the pay date, that everything will be in place by July 7th if we move this on the 21st. However, you know, it's our preference you move it tonight, obviously, to get it off the books. But if the council so wished, we wouldn't have an objection to, to one more meeting on it.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Just following up on that, maybe Ms. Bedowski, could you speak a little bit to it? Because I do wonder, I mean, theoretically, if something may change in the budget which could then impact this, and how weird would that be if we were then trying to go back and adjust something here that happened? I mean, it just seems like the budget should come first. Does that give you enough time if we push this two weeks?
Ms. Bedowski, Personnel Officer, it, it makes it tight. But we, we would do it. It just does make things tight because there's a lot of programming that goes into making sure it gets paid on that first pay period as kind of required by the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Thanks.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
The pay bill from last year passed on June 7th.
Thank you. That's helpful. Mr. Pusky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, senior moment here after serving eight years. This has come up multiple times. The council is the final fiscal authority. So if we were to make cuts to the budget, even if this passed, they would bring another bill forward to amend that. I think what they're asking here is the plan is because of positions and changes, they get ahead of the game. So what will happen is some employees may be paid later than others. I think what we're being said is that a hold till next meeting would be okay. I think that's what I'm hearing. But I just want to be clear that, again, the final fiscal note that the council passes determines who gets paid and who doesn't. And that even includes the negotiated agreements, similar with the Board of Education. Just because the administration met with them, if there's only a certain amount of money, they'd have to go back and renegotiate. So I just want to make that clear for the council that I think the intention of the administration, you could speak for them, is to get ahead of the game. And again, we'd have to come back and fix that, but I'll stop there and get a response. Thank you.
Yep. That's all correct, Mr. Pusky. Our, our preference, obviously, is, is to get this done and let Personnel get to work, but it is the council's call.
Mr. Volkey.
You may imagine where this is going. I would make a motion at this time that we hold this bill until the 21st, which I believe is our next meeting, so that we can tackle it after the budget and simultaneously with the Position Control Bill, which seems to be the most procedurally correct way to do this. But that's the motion I would move.
Hare, second. Let's see. I suppose this would be a roll call vote.
So if I could offer, you do have an amended bill. So it is technical. You can go right to vote. But if you would like to treat this as a regular amended bill and just have it come back at the next meeting like an amended bill, go out, once again, another public hearing, come back, and vote again. You can do that, too. It's up to you all.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion to hold, however. I guess let's go ahead and vote on the motion on the floor.
Okay. Yeah. Last time, there was a question about how, holding bills and closing public hearings and all that good stuff, so.
I see.
This would be an easy one because it's now an amended bill. But let me call the roll.
Okay.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Can I ask a point of order before we vote, even though you're not the parliamentarian? But with respect to this idea that we can hold it, who makes the decision as to whether it constitutes an amended bill for technical or substantive purposes? Who makes that call? Is that a chair decision, or is that a body decision?
The amendment has already been deemed technical. And when a bill is amended in substance, the charter and our rules say that it has to go back out again.
Understood.
And all that. So because this...
But you were suggesting that it could be considered differently.
Sure, yeah. Sorry. I mean, it probably would have been helpful information before you made the motion.
Who would make that decision?
I, I think the chair would just call it an amended bill, as we normally do. But that might have been more helpful before. That's what I was trying, I'm sorry, I was trying to motion to you, but the lack of being able to talk.
All right. I'll, I'll vote aye, and then we'll see what happens.
Okay. It's really a procedural thing at this point in time, whether it's going to go back out and be advertised and come back for another public hearing, or whether next time we're just going to see it come back for a vote. That's all. Okay. Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
That is five in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one absent. The, the motion to hold the vote until the June 21st meeting has been adopted.
All right. Thank you. We will... I'm, I'm sorry. I need to ask a, a point of order. If we're calling this a technical amendment, do we still need to hold another public hearing?
So we just, you just closed the public hearing, and you just did a motion to hold the vote. So sort of by default, there's no longer going to be a public hearing. It won't go out again. It won't be advertised again.
Thank you.
It's going to be kind of held onto the side until next time, and then we'll, you can vote on it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't always think of these things quickly on my feet. All right. Then at this time, oh, so that will be held until June 21st for our vote on Bill 51-22 as amended. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-22.
Bill Number 52-22, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
Another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Teroux, Ms. Bedowski are sticking with me, and we also have Ms. Atkinson from Personnel, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is here as well. 52-22 is the annual Position Control Bill. This bill adds six positions within the classified service, eliminates two positions from the exempt service, and adjusts pay grades for the other positions within the exempt service. We have our experts at the table. If you have any substantive questions on the legislation, and we also have a non-technical amendment that we will offer at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 52-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. And we did not have anyone signed up to speak ahead of time. But if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come down to the table, state your name and address for the record. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 52-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-22.
Bill Number 52-22, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
Thank you. And we do have one amendment, as Mr. Barron mentioned. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment adds the positions of Assistant Facility Superintendent and Manager, Recreation and Parks, Personnel Administration to the Classified Service.
Thank you. Once again, an administration amendment. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Corby handled what the amendment does quite nicely. These come at the request of our good folks at DRP. Hope that you will move the amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Councilman Pusky.
Second. Lacy.
Any discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven, I'm sorry, six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 52, as, excuse me, 52-22 as amended will be heard on June 21st, 2022. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 53-22.
Bill Number 53-22, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor. But I see you have a different team coming up.
I've got a bunch of good experts coming up, just a different, different set of faces. I have Ms. Carrier and Ms. Williams from OPZ, Mr. Herb and Mr. Chu from Health, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with me from the Office of Law. 53-22 is the 2022 Water Sewer Master Plan. State law requires that the county review and upgrade this plan every three years. The bill before you would repeal the 2017 plan and adopt the new plan. State law does require the Maryland Department of Energy, Mar, excuse me. State law requires Maryland Department of Energy approval of any changes to a county water supply and sewage system plan. Upon council adoption, the plan will be sent to MDE. We do have a technical amendment on this bill as well, and the good folks from OPZ and Health are here if you have any specific questions about the plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 53-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. And once again, we did not have anyone sign up ahead of time either. But if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, please come down to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 53-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 53-22.
Bill Number 53-22, An Ordnance Concerning Planning and Development Master Plan for Water Supply and Sewerage Systems.
Thank you. And once again, there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment fixes certain typographical errors in the master plan for water supply and sewage systems.
Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
I think you know what I'm going to say, continuing our longstanding policy. Please fix the typos. Thank you.
Sounds good to me. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Councilman Pusky.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Since Amendment Number One was a technical amendment, we can vote on this bill tonight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 53-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
And Ms. Radvian.
Aye. And I will say thank you to the team at the table for your willingness to be ready to answer any questions, even though we didn't really ask any. All right. Moving right along. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 54-22.
Bill Number 54-22. An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
Another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Coming back to the table is Mr. Teroux. I think we have Ms. Henry and, from DPW, and Ms. Bobbitt from Health, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is here as well. So as you know, we do these quarterly transfers at this time. 54-22 is an emergency bill because it is the fourth quarter transfer. It makes supplementary appropriations from unanticipated revenue and, oh, good, Ms. Anderson is here as well. Unanticipated revenue and transfers funds between departments. The bill transfers a total of $4,496,700 from the CAO Contingency Fund. In addition to the supplementary appropriations from the CAO Contingency Fund, the bill also makes appropriations amounting to a little over $7 million from various departments to cover costs related to rising gasoline prices, debt servicing, and healthcare claims, as well as to account for unanticipated grant funding and other unanticipated revenue in excess of budget estimates. We're happy to answer any specific questions you may have, and we do have an amendment to this bill at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 54-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. We also didn't have anyone sign up ahead of time. But if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 54-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 54-22.
Bill Number 54-22, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
Thank you. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment increases the appropriation to the Park Place Tax Increment Fund by $25,000, the appropriation to the Conference and Visitors Bureau Fund by $650,000, the appropriation to the Arts Council Fund by $115,000, and the appropriation to the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families by $640,000 to account for unanticipated revenues in excess of budget estimates.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, if you'd like to speak on the amendment, you may do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not much to add to, Madam Administrator. Ask that you adopt the amendment because we need to recognize the excess funds.
All right. Let's see. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Councilman Pusky.
Is there a second?
Second. Lacy.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Since Bill Number 54-22 is an emergency ordinance, we can vote on the amended version this evening. Any further, oh, I see Ms. Hare has her light. Are you just ready to vote?
No, no. I was going to ask one question.
Go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. It looks like a lot of the supplementary appropriations are being made to contractual services, if I understand this correctly. Can you just give me a brief rundown of what the overruns were in the contractual services specifically, since those I would have expected to have been relatively constant?
Fair question. Councilwoman Hare, I don't think I can do it, but Mr. Teroux definitely can. So I'm going to hand it over to him.
Stephen Teroux from Budget Office. Councilwoman Hare, if you don't mind, which department are you looking for?
So there's a few in here. There's kind of across the board, I can see Facilities Management, Real Estate, Department of Social Services, Office of Personnel, Office of Finance. There all seems to be fairly large chunks going to contractual services. Office of, Office of Law has a smaller amount. OIT, DPW. Just in general, was there something specific that caused everyone to overrun on the contractual services, or is it different for each department?
Sure. So Stephen Teroux again with the Budget Office. Happy to go department by department if you would like me to. They're all different. There was not definitely a common theme, but happy to run through some of the big ones if you would like.
Maybe go with a couple of the big ones, just to give an idea.
Sure. So Central Services, they had a lot of rent expenditures and also some rehab of some of the buildings, some of the new buildings that specifically came online. Ms. Romans is also here to answer some of those specific questions. Social Services, as detailed in both the blue letter and in the fiscal note, that's actually related to FEMA reimbursement. So we did something similar last year where we put some money against the general fund so we can get reimbursed for that from the FEMA program.
Got it.
That's still eligible for 100% of expenditures.
Okay.
Looking down at Public Works, this is related to snow removal costs, just as the final bills finally came in. And the Office of Finance will round out there. That's really related to ambulance fees and vendor payments that go out. We got more money in, so we got some more money out to the vendor that manages that program.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have a question about the contractual services for the Office of Personnel. The blue letter says that the Office of Personnel is requesting $200,000 for attorney fees and actuarial studies related to union negotiations. And it's not quite clear to me whether this is a request covering money already spent or incurred or planned to be incurred.
Stephen Teroux from Budget Office. Yeah, so the majority of these expenditures have already occurred, right? So we're at the very end of the fiscal year. So these are all related to those negotiations on the pay bill that we just discussed here in front of the council. So these are all related to those union negotiations. There's a base budget in the Office of Personnel for that, and depending on how negotiations go, they typically will go over that base budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further lights from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 54-22 as amended.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Did we, was that a technical amendment, or was that a substantive?
I'm sorry. Had we not voted on the amendment?
It's an emergency bill.
Oh, is it?
Oh, right, right, right. And we did. And yes.
Okay. Yeah. Aye.
We're using all the exceptions this evening.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 54-22 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We've got Bill Number 55-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of that bill.
Bill Number 55-22, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds.
Once again, administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Teroux is sticking with me. But we also have our experts from the Board of Education, Mr. Shaknovich and Mr. Stansky, as well as Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. 55-22 is an emergency bill, making supplementary appropriations from unanticipated grant revenue and making transfer appropriations between categories under the local education fund. The bill increases appropriations to additional categories, recognizes savings. The fiscal note and the auditor's blue letter provide a very nice breakdown of the details. And our team from the Board of Education is here. If you want to add anything, Mr. Shaknovich, or they can just answer your tough questions.
And I do see some lights. Mr. Pusky.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Chair. Per ethics protocol, I would disclose that my spouse... Aye. Thank you, Madam Chair. Per ethics protocol, I would disclose that my spouse is an assistant principal in the school system, and the ethics panel has allowed me to vote on this, but I'm fully publicly disclosing that. Thank you.
And along those same lines, for ethics purposes, I will disclose that I am a part-time teacher in Anorondle County Public Schools, and I am also have discussed and good to go forward here. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shaknovich, I got communication from some constituents, constituent, either way, about this bill, specifically the idea that if we do not make the transfer, that the amounts that remain within these categories would then be allowed to be dispersed in a different way. For instance, we're moving $7.6 million from instructional salaries and wages. In the event that we don't move that out of this category and it stays in that category, are all the teachers going to get bonuses? Because that was what someone had asked me, and they were suggesting that that's what ought to happen, is that the money ought to stay there. And my understanding is that is not how this works. So if you could just clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. For the record, Alec Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, and I'm joined by Matt Stansky, Director of Financial Operations. So you are correct. That is not how it happens. There is a combination of restricted and unrestricted funds within the category to begin with, similar to a question from Councilwoman Lacy moments ago. Again, it's a cleanup bill at the end of the year. So a lot of these transactions have happened. To the extent that they're restricted funds, they can only be used for that explicit purpose, and there actually is more restricted funds in that category than unrestricted, as I recall correctly. They can only be used for their intended purpose or rolled into next year for the terming conditions under that restricted element. On the unrestricted side, again, two answers. One, it's largely already been accounted for. The second piece is, under the state of Maryland law, anything that is deemed as compensation is a mandatory subject of bargaining, and the Maryland Public School, Public Relations Board has determined that that would have to be negotiated between the local education authority and the employer and the bargaining unit that represents those employees.
Seeing no additional lights or questions, Madam Secretary, have we received any testimony from members of the public on Bill Number 55-22?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the council, there was one submission received ahead of time through the testimony tool, went to the entire council. That entire piece of testimony is actually posted on the website, and it has been added to the record.
Thank you. And I should have clarified, that is part of our public hearing, which we have now opened. Madam Secretary, once again, seeing we have no one signed up ahead of time to testify here, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come down and testify, you may come down to the table, state your name and address for the record. And once again, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 55-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 55-22.
Bill Number 55-22, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 55-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 55-22 is passed.
Thank you very much. Let's see. We are moving on to those two resolutions that we will be discussing or will be discussing and voting on this evening. Resolution Number 13-22. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 13-22.
Resolution Number 13-22, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anorondle County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Thank you. And this is another administration item. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm left with just Ms. Klausmeyer hanging out with me. So Resolution 13-22 appoints Donna Williams to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board for a three-year term, expiring April 1st, 2025. This will be her first term. Ms. Williams has resided in our county for nearly 15 years, is an active duty service member, or as an active duty service member, and is now as a private citizen. She works as a senior data analyst. You should have her resume in front of you. Excellent choice. Hope you will approve her.
All right. Seeing no lights from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 13-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution Number 13-22 is adopted.
And thank you in advance to Ms. Williams for her service. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 14-22.
Resolution Number 14-22, Resolution Approving the Submission of Names for the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board.
And this is also an administration resolution. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 14, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with me. 14-22 will provide a list of qualified applicants to the governor's office for the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board as required by state code. From the applicants that are sent to the governor's office, two will be selected to be alternate members, and one applicant will be selected to be a regular member to serve until June 1st, 2027. You should have the resumes for all the applicants in front of you. Hope you will move this tonight.
Seeing no questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 14-22.
Ms. Pickard is absent. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye. And once again, thank you to those two appointees in advance for your service to our county.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Resolution Number 14-22 is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Oh, Mr. Puski.
Madam Chair, I don't normally do this, but I forgot just a point of personal privilege. I wanted to congratulate all our graduates. I know many of us are attending graduations, but the community college, certainly everyone, I just thought that it would be opportune time and to say that on behalf of the council. I think everybody agrees. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I have to echo Mr. Puski's sentiments. Broadneck High School graduates did graduate this evening. I did a little post for them. I wish them the best in their future endeavors. I wish I could have been here, but I have a great responsibility here in council chambers.
And at least the council was represented over there tonight. Mr. Volkey.
Motion to adjourn.
All of, excuse me, is there a second?
Second, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until June 9th, 2022, when we will meet here in the chambers to amend the proposed FY23 budget, and I believe it's 9:00 AM, correct?
Yes.
9:00 AM. We'll see you then. Have a great night.